Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you so much for being here. We'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to our very first meeting in the month of October. We'll start with roll call with Commissioner District One.
DeAndre Knoxon, District One.
Keith Love, District Two.
I'm a Bowie Commissioner at Large.
Derek Johnson, Mayor.
Abel Garza, Commissioner at Large.
Chris Sharp, District Three.
Jamie Clark, District Four.
All right, we have a quorum has been established, a full panel here. Thank you very much, Commissioners, for being here. And we will now have the invocation. Thank you for being here today, Pastor Matthew Brockman. That will lead us in the invocation of Peace Lutheran Church. And after which, we will have Commissioner Keith Love lead us in the pledges.
We pray. Blessed are you, O Lord, King of the universe, for you have fearfully and wonderfully created this world. And even though we brought upon it a fall and a curse, you have graciously sustained it. We ask for you to be with and bless the citizens of Texas City. Help every one of us seek to serve our neighbor and be a part of making Texas City a good and peaceful place to live. As there has indeed been some strife and surrounding a few things, especially in regards to police department, we ask, O Lord, that you would grant humility and wisdom to all of those involved, that they may come to a decision pleasing in your sight and for the benefit of the people of this city. We give you thanks for all those who serve on the police force, asking for you to grant them courage in their service and safety. We give you thanks for all those serving the fire department or EMS and grant them safety in their service as well. As the city seeking to improve and build up facilities, we ask for your blessing so that these things go smoothly. We ask for your blessing upon the mayor and city commissioners as they make decisions this evening, as they seek to serve the people. And we also give thanks for everyone who works for the city, keeping streets in good order, water flowing, and every other convenience and necessity we are blessed to have. And finally, we ask for your peace to also and blessing to also be with our brothers and sisters in Lamarck, who are close to our hearts as well as our next door neighbors as they are going through financial and other problems in their city. Grant them guidance and perseverance as they face these trials. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you Pastor Brockman for that wonderful prayer. Appreciate it. If you'd like to share anything that's going on at Peace Lutheran Church with the community, you can feel free to take a moment and do that now.
Well, we do happen to have a trunk or treat coming up on October 26th, the Sunday before Easter, a little bit before dark. And have, you know, lots of treats and stuff for kids, obviously. Even a little haunted hayride type thing through the campus. But then, we have a wonderful school that we host, Aspire Christian Academy. They have excellent teachers, they have really good students. I think they have a pretty cool chaplain. And they're looking for students. So if you know anybody who, it's, you know, very person- curriculum can be very personalized with the number- we have a very low number of students, so we can spend a lot of time with them.
Thank you. What is the, what are the age groups of the school you serve?
Pre-K three, all the way to high school.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you very much, Commissioner Love, for leading us in the pledges. Also, we are up to reports. At this time, we will hear a report from our aquatics program, Parks and Recreation and Tourism. We will hear from Mr. Marcel.
All right. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, everyone. My name is Marcel Favelora. I'm going to be presenting the 2025 statistics and information for aquatics. So first up, we have the total operating days for the Nestler Park Family Aquatic Center. We had a total of eighty-two operational days that spanned from May third to September first, with closures on Mondays due to decleaning and staff training. Here is our total admissions for 2025, which was twenty-two thousand eighty-three, majority of which being residents of Texas City. Here we have our private party reservations, a total of thirty-seven reservations. All were sold out within a matter of an hour. So that's good. Most of which went to residents of Texas City. Here is our total revenue for 2025, with a hundred, or yeah, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, most of which coming from our admissions. And this year, we had a above-average year for our concession stand. Here is our total operating days as compared to the last four years, as well as the total attendance, our private parties, and the revenues for those private parties as compared to the last four years. Here is some information regarding our swim lessons. So our spring session, we had two sessions of lessons, all ranging from pre-K to adult levels. We had a total of forty participants. The summertime, we had three sessions, ranging from water babies up to level two, with ninety-seven participants. And then currently, in our fall session, we have a total of three sessions. As of right now, we have thirty-seven, or yeah, thirty-seven participants as of today. Here's some of our natatorium activities. We have Texas City and Dickinson High School utilizing the facility. We have various scuba organization, as well as Clear Creek Swim League uses the pool for their Champ Series Swim Meet. Here are some of the projects that we have for 2025, this one being the main drain replacement. So we went through as part of our regular routine check-ins for the facility. And we identified a few problem areas that we needed to address, one of which being our main drains were due for replacement. Every ten years, they're supposed to be replaced. So this is a part of that, those regular maintenance problem. As well as, we identified some issues with our anchors that were also addressed. Here are some of our paint projects, which we did this year. On the left side, you'll see the island area, which we noticed some of our cracking in our pool shell, which allowed for some rust to build up on the pool deck. On the right side, we have our kiddie play structure. We saw a buildup of calcium, which we get with our pool tablets that we use for chlorine. And we went through and repainted those in-house. So yeah. And here's our tower slide. So a part of our annual inspection requires us to get the tower slides inspected. With that inspection, we identified some spalling down at the bases of the columns that support the structure, which exposed a little bit of rebar. We had three different companies come out to inspect those bases to make sure that they're structurally sound. All came back within good results. And then we partnered with our building maintenance department to get those bases cleaned up. So we went ahead and addressed the spalling, as well as sealed and repainted these structures. And then in the natatorium, we had a total of five fans, two of which were non-functional. Due to the environment of the natatorium with the chlorine, two of the fans became non-functional, as well as the controllers. So we had those two fans replaced, as well as the controllers. And then here are some improvements and changes that we made for 2025. So we had a additional stand added on the left side to the bottom of our tower slides. And this was in part to control the amount of people that we had at the top of the slide, which reduces accidents and congestion at the top of the structure itself. And then on the right side, we added a new menu item this year, which is our mini melts, which ended up being our biggest seller this year, bringing in quite a bit of revenue.
All right. And that's it. All right. Thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have any questions of Mr. Marcel?
Thank you. Good report.
Thank you for the report, as well as the preventive maintenance you and the department have been putting in this. It's such a great asset to the city. And it does, as you have presented, bring in revenue. So we want to make sure, not only does it look good, but it's safe enough for all those in attendance. Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Right. We're now up to public comments. We do have one person who has requested to address the commission. Mr. Jose Boyk, you can make your way to the microphone. As always, we have up to three minutes with our comments to address the commission. And your agenda item was six D. We'll be speaking on six D.
Yes. Thank you, Major Derek, and Commissioners. My name is Jose Boyk. I've been a Texas City resident for, since nineteen sixty-five. So it's about sixty years. My comments today are reference consent agenda. I consent agenda item six D to consider and take action in resolution 2025 on appointments and reappointments to the various boards and commissions. Sort of by happenstance, I checked today's commissioner meeting agenda and was surprised by having my name connected to the referencing consent agenda. It concerned my membership in the Texas City Historical Preservation Corporation and the Texas City Planning Board. It was concerning, since it seems that disregarding to what I would consider to be protocol, established practice, and common courtesy, I was not given any heads-up or alert at my termination of both memberships. Since the agenda item states that you all are taking action on appointments and reappointments, I would think that at a minimum, I would have been notified and my name noted without having to dig out the confusing narrative label "Staff Report." I couldn't find my name anywhere. So I finally clicked on staff reports instead of, I think it was supposed to be an Excel spreadsheet. Reading the staff report, I found that I had been replaced as an alternate member of the planning commission. And to add, my name was struck through or deemed termed out as a member of the Texas City Historical Preservation Commission. However, when you read the staff report, it indicates that my expiration term is 2026, not 2025. So perhaps that's, that's a typo. Then, to add, when I continued to review that cadre of people, I found that it's only five members of the Texas City Historical Preservation Commission listed. And the narrative says you need seven members. So right now, if you look at the, what you have in front of you, you only have five members that are not being stroked out. So anyhow, I understand that to you, such issues may seem to be classified as legislative minutia. It highlights continued issues with regarding checks and balances, established protocols and procedures. So in some ways, you know, I've been coming here for some time that I find myself thinking that I'm just uttering the sounds of silence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boyk. This time, we're at the consent agenda. Commissioners, you have before you consent agenda items six A through D. If you'd like any of those pulled for further discussion, you can do so at this time.
Mayor, I like item six D pulled on consent agenda.
Item six D?
Yes, sir. Six D. D as in DeAndre.
Got it. Any others, Commissioners?
I move to approve items A, B, C. A, B, and C. On the consent agenda.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve items six A, B, and C, seconded by Commissioner Keith Love. All of those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item six D, to consider and take action on resolution number 2025-105, appointments and reappointments of various boards, commissions, committees, et cetera. We'll hear from our city secretary. Before we do that, Commissioner Knoxon, was there any specific question you had? Or did you just want to pull it for further discussion?
For further discussion.
Okay. Mr. Ramari B, our city secretary.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I guess first I can address the public comment in a roundabout way. The person that spoke did inquire about their position on various boards and committees. And what was explained to them is that I wouldn't be able to tell them what their status is prior to a vote before commission. If their term is up for reappointment or expiration, I can't see into the future of what the commission is going to decide by way of their appointment on that various board or committee. Nonetheless, what you have before you is appointments for vacant positions. And there are about seven of them. And then there's also a staff report that lists out the people that we have spoken to in a purple that would like to be reap-, no, sorry, in blue, that would like to be reappointed. And then in purple are the people that would be new members of the commission, if that is your will. Some stats that I would like to give you as it relates to boards and commission and community matters is one of the things that I was tasked with was diversifying our boards and commissions. And so something that we started was the applications, which can be found on the city's website. And it's open twenty-four seven throughout the year. We accept applications. And they are held for retention for two years. And so, seven applicants that submitted an application in 2024 have been placed on various boards and committees. And then seven applicants that applied in the year 2025 have also been placed on various boards and committees. Today before you, you have four men and five women seeking appointment. One member lives in Amberne Oaks, one member in Pearl Brook, two in Logomar Seacrest, three on Seventh Avenue-ish, and then someone on Twentieth Avenue North. So that would tell you that we have people from District One, District Two, District Three, and District Four. They come from various backgrounds. We have someone that is a geologist, someone that is retired, someone that works for the Texas City Lamarck Chamber, a registered nurse, and a merchant mariner. There are people that have lived in Texas City for one year, all the way to forty-three years. And so, I come before you asking to make these reappointments and appointments just to give our various boards, committees, and commissions a more expansive reach to represent all people within the city of Texas City.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee. Commissioners, are there any questions to Ms. Lee about this agenda item? We have before us the various people on the screen. At this time, recommended, Mr. Jerry Newman to the Bio Golf Board, Christopher Wilcox and Warner Morales to the Board of Adjustments, Kim Agiri Villario to the Keep Texas City Beautiful Advisory Board, Gina Patterson and Jacinta Temple to Reckon Tour Parks Board, Mr. Travis Belts as an Economic Development Advisory, Ms. Ginger Bond as an alternate to the planning board, and Becky McGlaughlin and as an alternate to the zoning commission, as well as those attachments. Any other questions? Commissioner Knoxon, do you have any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. What's going on with Boyk's?
What's going on with what?
With Jose Boyk's. What's good, what's going on? I don't understand. I don't see his name on.
Mr. Boyk's is, I believe, an alternate on one of the boards. And his, his term is up, is expired, so we-
His term's expired.
Sir?
It's expired.
I believe so. Was it expired on one or not on the other?
So on the planning board, Jose Boyk's, his alternate position is up for either reappointment or expiration. And so, the people over the planning board have asked to either terminate his position and appoint Ginger Bond, or reappoint him.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions? So oftentimes, just for clarification, people on these boards serving actively or serving as alternates, their terms expire. None of the terms are indefinite. They either serve one-year terms or two-year terms. And sometimes they can, they, you know, we have a plethora of applications of people who are desiring to serve. Sometimes people, not in this particular case, but sometimes people can be removed from boards for lack of attendance. If we never have a quorum, they, they just don't show up over and over. So we take them off the board and replace them with someone else. And so, we have seen a great interest in different people from the community willing to serve. And so, that's the recommendation we're making here.
And the 2025 is the, the actual expiration date, it's not twenty- I think he made a reference to 2026. So 2025 is, is the expiration date for that position?
Yes.
And September is the time when it, when it happens? Every Sep-, I mean, I'm sorry, not September, October?
Yeah, September-
September?
Thirty is when most of these terms expire. This agenda item should have come to you on the second meeting of your September agendas, but it didn't, so I'm presenting it now. So there are supposed to be seven members. It is the recommendation of that board secretary that those two individuals be let go from that particular board.
And, and we can, even though there is a time, September, we can add people to the board throughout the year.
And we do.
And we have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So his, his term for this board, the Historical Preservation Board, is not over until September of twenty-six?
Yes.
But they're requesting that he be removed?
Correct.
Do they give a reason?
Yes. Would you like that reason to be on record at this time, or?
No. But his term isn't over yet, so I, I, I would like to hear the reason, but not on the record.
Maybe the person who was removed from that board needs to hear the reason.
They will in a letter.
Okay.
Yeah. We try to keep that between, you know.
Okay. That, that's a good call.
Yeah. Everybody, I'll just say a general statement. But everybody who serves on these boards serves as ambassadors to the city, right? To promote and push the vision of the city and particularly the, the bylaws and the information of those respective boards, whether it be housing authorities, zoning commission. They, they work in sync and in concert with the city to serve the citizens, as well as the purpose of the various boards and commissions. And if there's been a recommendation for removal, it comes with, with good reason.
There's no contractual agreement for that term.
No. There's no, no contractual, no obligation. It's, it's at-will, just kind of like the employees of Texas. We have, we haven't taken a vote on that just yet. But once we finish today's vote, a final listing of those who are serving will be made public.
And the upside will be updated or on there.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I make motion to approve.
Second.
A motion has been made by Commissioner Chris Sharp to approve today's recommendations, seconded by Commissioner Knoxon. All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We're now up to the regular items. On regular item seven, regular item seven A says to consider and take action on resolution number 2025-104, entering into a three-year contract with Stryker Sales LLC for the service, replacement, and upgrade of certain ambulance and EMS equipment, including life pack monitors, Lucas devices, power load stretchers, and related items. We'll hear from our fire chief, Chief Dennis Harris, and associates.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, community. This is the ambulance equipment that we've been speaking about over the last few months, and our monitors, stretchers, and things of the like. And I would introduce our EMS administrator and our Stryker rep. He works on all of the great equipment that saves lives around town. And when we break it, he fixes it. And if we tear it up bad enough, he brings us another one. So this will replace and repair some of our devices and items that we have in service.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Or do you have anything else you'd like to add and say about Stryker? Or you?
The EMS administrator has been ready and primed to get up here and wow y'all about the equipment. And Mr. Sam has too, and I couldn't hold him back, so they're up here. Y'all have any questions?
Chief, the replacement cost is much better deal than a, I mean, the, the maintenance cost and fixing is much better than replacing the units. I mean, is that?
So some of the units, we, we have, once they reach service life or we beat them up enough, then we do have to replace them. But working on them, yes, it does save us a tremendous amount of money.
You're still in Hendershot's fame right now.
So with this new equipment, the, over the entire service lives of the equipment, all repairs or replacement is going to be covered. So currently, our fleet of monitors that we have, much are, we can't work on them at all. They can't be repaired. I have about four on, on the line in service on frontline apparatus right now that can be repaired.
That can be.
That can be. But this will, this will update us to the new standard, the highest level, the state-of-the-art equipment that we need at the department.
I like the sound of that.
That was what we saw out a few meetings ago. Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Impressive.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made by Commissioner Clark to approve this item, seconded by Commissioner Garza. All those in favor, state by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations. All right. We're up to Commissioners' comments. We'll start with Commissioner DeAndre Knoxon of District One.
That D, DeAndre?
D as in DeAndre. That's right.
No comment.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner Love?
Uh, no comment.
Commissioner Bowie?
No comment.
Commissioner Garza?
I don't know if that was that young man's first time arguing just to give a report, but he did a good job. I, I, way to go.
Marcel, it might have been the second time, right?
I think so.
Third time? Okay.
Never seen it before.
Yeah. He's, he's been doing a good job as the, as the aquatics supervisor. Thank you. Commissioner Sharp?
I have no comment.
Commissioner Clark?
Well, I'm in pink today, so, and I'm not going to steal your thunder, Nicole, but our annual breast cancer awareness walk is Saturday. And, but I just came from, my granddaughter was doing a Servathon for volleyball at, at the high school of Clear Falls and raising money and for breast cancer awareness, and specifically a teacher there. And, but my, my younger sister is a breast cancer survivor. And my mom had breast cancer at ninety years old. So it's near and dear to my heart. So let's all remember this month, all the breast cancer survivors and those that weren't so lucky. So let's just, let's always keep them in our prayers. So that's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize. I do have some-
Go ahead.
I've been meaning to do this the last two meetings. I wanted to give a huge thank you to the fire department or neighborhood improvement services. They have been cutting a lot of the overgrown lots in District One and across the city that I've seen. So I happened to drive down South Acres one day and saw a lot that I got, you know, contacted about. And then I drove down a few more streets. I saw two more yards that were cut that same day. So just wanted to give you guys a shout out and my appreciation, and also the citizens and residents of District One appreciation as well, so. Now I'm done, Mayor.
If you wanted to go last, you just say so.
No, 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 no.
Thank you for that reminder, Commissioner Clark. The walk is this weekend. I plan on being there and walking again. We did have a walk this past weekend as well. I want to thank everybody for coming out to that. The Mayor's 3K Movement is Medicine Walk. It was a great success for the first time for that one. But again, breast cancer walk this weekend. And Ms. White is not here, but if she was, she'd be telling us about the Alzheimer's Walk that's coming up right after that. So one thing Texas City going to do is we're going to have some parades and we're going to walk, right? And so just come on out and support those events. I just want to also really thank everybody. I'm not sure if I said this at the last meeting or not, but for the grand opening to the Community Plaza, Sixth Street was a great success. A lot of feel-good stories and good vibe in Texas City. The concert was great. Kudos to Kristen and her Economic Development Team for putting that together. Just an all-around great event. If you haven't had a chance to go to the Sixth Street Community Plaza, you might want to make your way there while we have this wonderful weather going on out here. But I believe EDC is going to be planning some more events at the plaza and, you know, music, food, fun, you know, just come on out. So just kudos and congratulations on that project. Concert on October eleventh, there you go. Last time we had Taylor Swift. You never know who we have this coming time, you know. Taylor Swift cover band. I'll just go ahead and say that for the record. So thank you all very much. Yesterday, we had a special call meeting in which we approved the 2025-2026 tax rate as well as the FY25-26 budget. And so I want to say kudos. I said it yesterday. I want to say kudos again to our finance team for working diligently with each of the departments. And thank you to all of the city departments for working together to try to present a budget that our citizens can be happy with, a tax rate that was reduced slightly, approved in the no-new revenue rate. To all the members of the Commission, thank you so very much for looking over that budget and approving it. And so we're happy to say that not only did we lower the tax rate, but we also were able to provide our citizens with a plus-three percent cost of living adjustment. And so wish it could be more, but I thank you for understanding that in the future we'll continually to be fiscally responsible and good stewards of our resources so that we can present to our citizens the best budget that Galveston County has ever seen. And so thank you to all of you for that special call meeting and the results of that on yesterday. I don't have any other comments, other than that I'm going to reach out to all of the staff members in the audience. If anybody has a comment or an update from staff, you can make your way to the podium and you can announce that at this time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So as you all know, we do have our breast cancer awareness walk, but tonight we have our line dancing event at the Wings of Heritage, so I'm sure I'd like to see you all over there after this. Come line dance with us. But again, it's the walk this Saturday. After the walk, make it down to Sixth Street, we have our train festival. This is truly a spectacular event. It's from ten to four, and it's just a phenomenal display of all the little model trains. So please be sure to come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Any others?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, go ahead.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, Dee.
One of those has a number of places for you to sign. Okay. The last one of the contract. Thank you.
Good job, Connor. Good job. Have a good one.